Get it varies from the complaint in homeowner.
Sixty-five or seventy-three.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining this appointment for the Monday, January sixth, two thousand fourteen meeting. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Only a couple announcements. One is the board would like to wish everybody a happy new year. And also, I am sure the board also offers their condolences to the whole family who, Tommy Wu lost his mother, Lorraine Wu. She was a great veteran. Served her country and served the town and also the St. Augustine's community, always willing to help. So she'll be missed. And that's it. The approval of minutes and warrants, we have December sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, at seven P M.
I have a question.
Yep.
On page three, Helen, from the number form, the fourth paragraph of the fifth line. The sentence starting, or the first word in the line is earned from town council review of the case. It was dismissed with prejudice. I indicated it was without prejudice.
Okay.
And that was by agreement of both parties. That's all I have on that.
Is there a motion to accept with the changes as discussed? Motion to accept, right? Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And I do have warrants. First is the payroll warrant for the pay period ending December twenty-eighth in the amount of thirty-six thousand, four hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. I have the payroll deductions for December sixteenth in the amount of four thousand, four hundred sixty-six dollars and seventeen cents. And the payroll deductions for December thirtieth in the amount of three thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars and two cents. And I have the vendor warrant dated today, January sixth, in the amount of one hundred, one thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. And the majority of that is snow and ice. A great deal of salt was purchased. And there's some payments to Blue Cross Blue Shield that kicked it up a little bit as well.
Motion to accept the warrants is read?
Motion to accept is read.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next we have highway surveyor.
Thank you. I guess the first topic would be the big one, which is the chapter ninety reimbursement. I know your last meeting, you allowed Helen to contact or pursue.
I did. I actually spoke with Gary Warren today. He's in the chapter ninety department. He's not the actual individual who has Millville. Tara has Millville. But Gary was very helpful. He offered to come out and sit with you if he needed help on the forms. What he did indicate was in two thousand seven, when Mass DOT created the ten-year bond program, the money rolls from year to year now through two thousand seventeen. So we're not in any immediate jeopardy of losing that funding.
I do have, I think I've gone, gotten through most of the paperwork. I need the board's signature on these forms. We get a signature on those from the board, then the next signature will be from Marilyn. That is the final report. It's duplicate in the reimbursement request. I did speak with Tara, our new liaison for, from Mass DOT. They've taken their staff also and crunched it, so she's been a little busy because she also does snow and ice patrol. So she hasn't been readily available for me, but she's been a big help. So with those forms signed by you, I believe I need to have Marilyn sign those and she has a material sheet she needs to go through. Also, the only other thing I think I would need from Helen would be the invitation to bid, a summary of the bids, and evidence of requesting the prevailing wage.
Yep, I've got all that.
So I'm hoping that by the end of next week, depending on Marilyn, meeting up with her and getting her the paperwork, I'm sure she's gonna go through it all before she finalizes it, that I could have it back and get it to Mass DOT for reimbursement.
Okay. Question, how much?
It's one hundred fifty-nine thousand, seventy-four dollars and forty-two cents.
Yeah, coverage checking it?
Yes, the project went out at two, what was it, two oh six we had approved?
Two oh six, seven thirty-five.
That's what we requested. We came in on the budget and we still have that remaining in our line item on my, in my budget under chapter ninety. So that will be, go to its future. Now we also have F Y fourteen and thirteen that we have not utilized also from chapter ninety.
Okay.
So we'll be able to look at that in the future.
It looks like a quarter of a million dollars at the sum of those two.
Correct. Yeah. With that, the outline projects are still the lower half of Lincoln Street, the upper half of Lincoln Street, and Ironstone Street in completion with chapter ninety funds. I do have preliminary pricing on Lincoln Street. I do not on Ironstone as of yet.
Okay. Ironstone, is the truck traffic from the asphalt plant slowed down? Do you know?
Right now it has. They're not producing any material for the winter.
Yeah, right.
They did close down.
From my understanding, I believe the chief is working with you to get signs to regulate the load traffic?
Yeah, his initial request was for go-through trucking. My request to him was to put a weight limit on it of forty thousand pounds or thirty-five, somewhere in there. In any commercial vehicle registration has a G V W on it.
Right.
Whether the truck's full or not, that is your gross vehicle weight. You're not allowed on that road if you're over it. It's the law.
Right.
And he was very receptive to that, so I think that's the way it's gonna go.
Okay.
I know there was just an accident at Central and Ironstone that had some cause of trucking, so it's all the more, the more we have for backing to do that. I definitely agree with, with that, but with a G V W.
Another question, Brian, is the state gonna issue the signage for us?
I don't know. The chief has taken the bull by the horn. He is, he has gone after the state for that petition then, to my knowledge. So I don't, I don't have that answer. I'm willing, you know, to help and find the money within the budget if we need to get a few signs to do that.
All right, cool.
Main Street, the railroad crossing that we use to access the old Mill Yard and the area that we use for staging of material. P and W took out the railroad crossing, as you all might know, some months ago. It's kinda strapped my hands a lot. We have no place to go with brush. We were able to fit the catch basin cleanings up by our trailers up by the school. We're not gonna have enough room for street sweepings up there. I'm gonna, I'm looking for, you know, guidance on that. I really, you know, would like to see if we could pursue entering the town-owned property off of Central Street. You know, involve some engineers and looking into, but I'd like the board's approval to at least start looking into it.
Okay.
It's really a good spot for us to stage our material. And there again, the fire department, they've started using that for a training facility. I mean, we were kinda landlocked, locked out of that, that area.
Right. Okay, well, we do. I mean, we, we need something. We need, we need space somewhere, right?
Brian, is the sand being removed from town afterwards, or is it staying?
It's being removed.
It's being removed. So it's just a holding?
It's just a holding, holding location, but I mean, it's up there by the school. It's very tight. Getting trailers in there to get it out after, bring it in is one thing. Bring, taking it out of there is a whole nother game. That's a tight, tight location. The road, you know, going in there isn't paved. It's rough.
How about this location is off the road?
Down here on Main Street, it's absolutely perfect. The, the perfect location for it.
With the existing curb cut?
We did some preliminary measurements, myself and the captain at the fire department. And the curb cut shows on the measurements that it, it's right in line where it's supposed to be, within a few feet. I'm not an engineer, but the measurements we got from the assessor's office showed us two hundred and seventy-some odd feet from the railroad bridge wall. Anybody can take a tape measure and get a close proximity and it put us right, right in line where we need to be. To the right of that is all town-owned land. The canal, old canal does go through there. So, you know, my recommendation would be to talk to an engineer to find out what it would cost to have the left-line engineer staked off and then, you know, we, we know if we have the room to go in. And move, move forward from there. It's really not that far.
Sounds like a brilliant.
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion to proceed with engineering? I, I don't, yeah, I mean, my hands are tied, so I would definitely, I'll make the motion that we pursue. Never get costs. Start with that. Any further discussion? Jen's thinking. You get that look. So let it, let it out.
No, I know it needs to be, it definitely needs an engineer, because I know the walls are, you go in and need it. I know, I'm thinking more, what is P and W's stance? Because I ride down one twenty-two and there's at least twenty people who are accessing over to driveways or businesses.
Yep.
So why is Millville different? Had, did they say why we're different?
No. I probably wouldn't say.
I mean, you've got the houses on one twenty-two, they go over. I mean, they did build the bridge for that other place. You go up and thinking, I think, you go actually over it, right at C V S. Like on east west hop for that? Is that the same line? Yeah.
There's, there's no crossing here.
And then you go further up.
I don't wanna get offline, but there was, they were having problems with a local business and, and that was, to my knowledge, why they.
Right. But I mean, you even go further up and there was that old karate studio down in Northbridge on the right-hand side, and they have access over it. I just, I don't know why, why.
The Northbridge water treatment.
I don't know why we're different. I mean, if the problem is the business, then we need, then maybe that needs to be rectified. Rectify. Not to say that we shouldn't look into this. But I just, I'd like to know from our, P and W, from the railroad, why? Why are we, why are we in this position?
Well, can we contact P and W and find out?
You know, something official.
Jeremy, have our legal people look at that?
We do. Gary was speaking actually with the president of P and W, so I will follow up with him.
I mean, I know there's been some events that they used it for parking, for, you know, was it overextended? If that's the case, then can we fine-tune it to be official, Millville officials in order to, you know, for dumping or brush or whatever the, you know, trading or whatever it is?
Nope, yeah, town of Millville use only.
That's one of the, yeah. You know, that it's town-owned property, no trespassing type thing and, and leave it at that.
What we did ask of council was to see if he could at least convince them to, in the meantime, while we go back and forth with them, at least allow us temporary access just for Millville town officials, you know, to get over the, the tracks for that purpose. But we haven't even received word back yet on that, so.
They took it out, so somebody would have to push that.
Right, 'cause if, I mean, if they're gonna stand strong with it, at least give us temporary occupancy, like you said, till we do get another facility up and running. They didn't really give us a very long warning.
But along the track, along the track, are there other communities that are in the same boat or other landowners that aren't being denied access? Are we being singled out? I'm, I'm not saying like we're being picked on, but why? What is the reasoning? Was it the over-extenditure of the use of it? Was it, you know, I mean, we can fine-tune those things if need be. But I wanna know, from Providence to Worcester, are we the only ones? I know you don't have the answers. I'm just, you asked me what I was thinking.
There's a hundred, there's at least a hundred crossings from here to Worcester.
I see them going over to private homes and businesses.
You're right.
And ours is nothing there except for us putting, you know, our, our brush and our sand.
If we do ask, will we get a response?
Well, let's see what Mr. Brackett has found out and, and in the meantime, if you could get some numbers anyway. All right.
So do you need a vote on that?
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-one Hope Street, the public passageway. There was talk about, I know the gate, one gate has been opened, which I think is fine. We've been treating it like a sidewalk, not plowing it, not sanding it. Unless it becomes icy, but becoming it, it's a secondary. It's not a priority on our list, the roads up there. Then we move on to the town hall. Then we go to C D Center and we take care of the sidewalks. With that, I really don't think the town should entertain ripping that asphalt out of there. This is my outlook on the whole thing. I mean, we've only gained by having it there. That other gate on the other side still needs a lock. It's only bolted shut. Being the way it is, it's not, not passable by a vehicle. You see other towns with other parks, walkways, that close from certain time of the year. Do it with a parking bed. Public passageway closed from November fifteenth to April fifteenth. You talked about signage being out there. You don't wanna post it and make it look all at a residential property. You already have it there. You already have the public passageway signage. Just a few more words on a sign would take care of it all. I, I, you know.
Right, 'cause if we start, we start solving that, then what, then what's next?
I gotta know now that I have to stop maintaining it, which is, you know, it's town-owned land and, you know, somebody brought it to attention, we gotta take care of it. But it's, you know, to me, it's like having a, a park up in Blackstone on far end of Summer Street. It's closed during the winter.
Yep.
They shut the gate and the sign says closed since spring.
Yep.
The only outstanding thing would be the nuisance to the homeowners of kids skateboarding and smoking on it.
Is that there when they bought the house?
The other, the passageway? That was there before the house.
It was there before I was born.
Well, it was in the eighteen hundreds. It was in the eighteen hundreds.
But, and now we, the town of Millville gained from the past homeowner by having it paved and virtually stopping someone from really twisting an ankle or, or getting a stick stuck in their bike spoke and falling over. Leaving the pavement there, I, I was told to entertain looking into the cost and ripping it out.
Well, we all know it should've been paved.
Couple, I understand it should've, but it was at someone else's expense.
What they say is, like you said, lock the gate and make it seasonal.
The second gate, I can understand from the homeowner's perspective, looking at it. And if the kids are hanging on it, like they said, I did see it sagging already, but it's, now it's open. I, you know, I think you got a good scenario right now to lock that other gate and let it, let it be.
That's the end of it, right?
Yeah, and the only other question would be is to sign it for the winter months. No passage. Or we keep maintaining it like a sidewalk? And if someone wants to walk through, they can walk through?
Well, I think that'd be cool for the season, and that's the end of it. We don't have to worry about it. As long as there's signage up there, I think that covers.
Signage, but it, I just want it to be known, it's not taking a lot for us to clear it, secondary. So if, if you wanted to keep going the way we're going, I'm not against it. You wanna get the signage, by all means, I really, you know, I just wanted you to know, there is signs over there already for the passageway to add, you know, a few words to.
Take one down and put that one up, just a couple more words is what you're saying, correct?
Yep.
And make it seasonal.
Mm-hmm.
And then you don't have to clear it.
Then if somebody goes in December, slips and falls, would, would not? Have to post it.
How's the board feel about that?
'Cause the other.
I think that's a legal issue, 'cause I know, like, if you go somewhere there, like, interwrite your own risk and something happens, you're still liable.
Well, yeah.
Let me ask this.
Even if there's a sign that says it.
Yeah, your insurance has to pay.
Well, how, how about if he asks Brackett what the legality is?
'Cause the other.
What to be posted on a sign.
Couple more words on it and that's the end of it, and it's seasonal, then so be it. Brian doesn't have to do anything. It's less weight but for him, less cost, and everybody's happy.
'Cause the other, the other idea was Tom Height sent us a letter wondering if we should take that small little parcel, turn it over to the homeowner, let them pay our legal fees for the transfer. Of course, has to go to town meeting.
Wouldn't have to go out to auction?
Yep.
See?
So you really wanna go through all of that?
You know what I mean? Could end up another person owning it. Then what?
But I know in the past, there was always talk, 'cause the center's on the other side, there was always talks about future use of, you know, say it was a pathway and a bridge across the brook and a natural kind of, you know, setting of whatever. I mean, that was years ago. So I don't know if I would be in total agreement of selling that parcel, depending on the need. Like I do with every parcel in town. I think we need to know what, what the needs of the whole.
Yeah, I never sell land. Land is too valuable. What you have, you hang on to it, you know?
Yeah.
I think we should ask the lawyer, see where we stand, and if it's just a couple words that closes it, then I think we should go that way.
'Cause I know, I mean, there's areas like in the Berkshires and the state park out there and then the White Mountain State Park and the national parks. They actually have roads that they just closed. They don't even plow it all. And it's posted.
Yeah.
So people close a road, you can close a sidewalk, I would think.
We'll make a motion to have the lawyer look into it and get back to us.
Ask Brackett, what his opinion is.
Yeah, I'll check with the insurance company first to see what their recommendation is.
Yeah.
And then if necessary, I'll call the attorney. But I don't know that it even needs a call to the attorney. I think the insurance company is gonna be able to answer that for us.
Yeah, they got their own attorneys.
Yeah.
Okay.
Stormwater, we did our outfall inspections when it was dry. Everything seemed to still be in line with what had been happening the past couple years. All the retention ponds and drainage areas were cleaned and maintained as, as normal. As I told you, we did the catch basins and we put that material up at the school. The elementary school, we had some of the fence issues along the wood line.
Yep.
We finally have that project completed, aside from picking up some of the pieces of the old fence that are buried in the snow.
Okay.
But we had two separate gates in two different locations put in, which we utilized just this past storm for a normal storm, three, six-inch snowfall. We're not gonna open them. We did open them prior to the storm we just had. They did push the snow through the openings. So now the gates are open with snowbank, snow pack in there. So it seemed to work all right. As you all have probably seen, we did receive the new truck. It is in service. Has not, had its radio installed yet. The radio man's supposed to do it within two weeks. Have not been able to put the town seal on it yet due to temperatures. We'll get it on there. Probably the day the radio repair man does the radios. They'll be asking the chief to utilize some space inside a warm building.
I have one question on that, on the new truck. And that question is that, that vehicle needs to be included on the town vehicle inventory for, for green energy requirements.
Okay.
And alls I would need would be either a copy of a title or a registered, a copy of the registration.
I just received the title, actually, the end of last week. It was in my mailbox. I have it in the file upstairs. I did talk with Christina to verify where it should go, and I know it goes to you, so I haven't.
So if I could get a cockpit, that, they'll take care of that.
I will get that to Helen for her safekeeping and she can get you the cockpit. Other than that, uh, the winter hasn't been nice to us.
No.
Month of December, we were on the road seventeen times of a month. It started on December first. As of putting in my last set of bills, my calculation was we were about seven thousand dollars over budget already. That was up until the first of January. Uh, that was doing the calculation of the budget sheet versus what I was submitting. And now we've just been six days into this year and we've been out six days. Now, when I say we're out six days, we're out minimally of four hours to twenty-four hours, just consider, you know. Anything four hours or more is a day. And it's been just that. And I'm sure we're gonna be out again tonight or tomorrow morning.
Is that how it works, man? Anything past four hours is a day?
I'm calling it a day. You, you call us out, it's four hours.
Right.
There's no way around it. Uh, we've been utilizing the town trucks. You see some of the bills come in. I'm gonna use a round number. It's a five hundred dollar bill from a subcontractor. That means the town trucks went out and did all the work. Uh, you bring the subcontractor in, that, that five hundred dollar bill is the loader for four hours.
Right.
To load us. Uh, so we've been utilizing it. We did last night. Myself and, uh, Jonathan went out. We went out at eleven thirty at night and we were back in at four in the morning, but we had to load it down there. You call out the contractor with his equipment for sanding, which we need to still. If, you know, the snow's falling, the two trucks aren't gonna keep up with the town itself for sanding, so we bring in his. You start multiplying that number into the thousands. Uh, we are saving. We are doing everything we can with our own equipment, but. We're getting hit pretty, pretty good in my eyes. It's a consistent phone call in the middle of the night to maintain the roads and it's duly noted. Uh, there's been a couple of times I questioned why I was getting a phone call. I've gotten up, I've taken a ride on my own. When you slide through one intersection, you say, okay, we're gonna do it. And that's what happens.
So are they still, the contractor, they still paid by the actual hour?
By the hour.
Not a minimum?
Uh, the rule of thumb, there is a minimum of four hours.
Yeah.
Um, he does, he does, uh, things for two hours. He, he doesn't, he doesn't hang it over our heads, um, all the time. Sometimes he duly makes his four hours. Uh, uh, you know, he's there for three and when you get the four. He's there for two, you, you do get him to give you the invoice for two.
One last thing to follow up on the, uh, town, uh, highway trucks. The old truck, are you about to declare that obsolete?
It's obsolete.
It's obsolete.
That's gonna be on, I've got three vehicles, um, holding them until a future meeting.
I was thinking of bringing it to the, uh, town graveyard over here. But, uh, we did try, uh, one of the nice days actually to start the vehicle. It didn't, it wasn't solid, so. You need to be aware of that.
Yeah, it's already been taken off of the insurance and it's not registered anymore.
We could use the space, so we can do something about it, get rid of it. Uh, put it out. I'm only gonna put out the bid.
Yeah, we're gonna.
There's been, uh, some people very interested, by the way, uh, vendors of the town. That would like to own the truck, so.
Looking forward, probably need the revenue.
Probably. Other than that, um. Been busy, obviously because of the snow, but I have the two part timers and they've been working the full. Full four days a week, if not more, uh, even prior to the snow. You know, the years before, we had a little bit of low times and this year we just, it just never came with what was going on. That's all I got, um.
Mr. Chair, I just have one question for Brian. With respect to the gates up at the school. When you've opened them and there's a mound of snow there covering access, when that melts, who's in charge of being sure those are closed again?
Uh, we, the highway department.
Highway, okay.
We will, we will maintain those.
Same time, close the gates on N C Street?
Uh, we have a gatekeeper for that.
He's in Florida now.
Well, who closed them? Somebody closed them. We have that agreement with, uh, Mr. Height. And I wanna thank him for it. Uh, we go through and open them. He knows during the duration of the storm, they stay open. When he feels fit, he closes.
He assign.
Works great.
He assign that responsibility to be as he turn over the keys to his house.
Okay, thank you.
First public forum. No correspondence. Appointments and resignations. Chief just walked away. They're all his.
He's out there.
Yeah, I think he went to go. Everybody good? That, uh, the council on aging, donations on the vans and stuff. That, that money that's sitting in limbo somewhere.
Still going back and forth.
We were a percentage of the pay, we were, we paid a percentage of the maintenance.
Well, the, the.
We should've got a percentage of the donations. It's, it's common sense. It's more than any.
She's not gonna let that go.
No, good. We shouldn't. We shouldn't. Alright, we can come back to appointments and resignations if everybody agrees till they come back. Executive secretary's report?
Um, very brief this evening. Um, as Brian had mentioned, chapter ninety, um, has been overspent. And by mass general law, it is the board's responsibility along with the finance committee to vote to overspend, to authorize overspending, snow and ice budget.
Snow and ice, yeah. Not, you said chapter ninety at first.
Oh, I'm sorry. The snow and ice budget. I have chapter ninety.
I wrote it down.
Uh, as of this date, uh, and as Brian mentioned, this does not include, uh, last Thursday and Friday. Uh, according to the budget, the deficit is now at eight thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars, so. I'd be looking for a motion from the board to authorize overspending, snow and ice budget, and then we'll be requesting same with the finance committee.
Motion.
Motion.
Alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Um, and just a reminder that the next board's meeting, um, the town hall will be closed on Monday. The meeting will be held on Tuesday, the twenty-first. Uh, in observance of Martin Luther King Day.
Wow, it's already here?
Yeah. And that's it.
Wow. What a way to start the year, Hall. Well, good job. That was short. Alright, old business, anyone? New business? We have members forum, nothing posted. Final public forum, nobody. Now we need the chief.
Go get him on. Here, here we go, here we go.
We'll shake him up.
Hey, hey, we're waiting for you and you walk out.
I'm sorry. I didn't see who was up next.
We skipped over your finished meeting. Now we're waiting for you.
I'm getting well sick. I'll stay back.
Stay way back.
Please do.
I know, look at me, I'm a wreck.
I should.
Uh, we have two appointments and resignations.
You have three resignations and one appointment?
Yeah, let me briefly explain that to the board. Unfortunately, we lost three great candidates and police officers in the town. All three found very lucrative jobs. We told them Martinson went to the City of One Socket. Surely we can't fault him for that. A lot more money and a larger department. Uh, part-time officer Pickering, a great, great kid, um, great part-time police officer. He went to the town north out of our, a lot more money. Bigger department. Uh, Officer Kerrigan, uh, retired from police work and took a job with the federal government. So all three, you can't fault them. They had wonderful opportunities and a lot more money and that's what it's all about sometimes. But we still have the core group of police officers, so there's no issue. On the appointment side, Officer McNevech, just a little disclaimer about Officer McNevech. Certainly a wonderful part-time police officer. Been with us for four years. Uh, full-time academy graduate, does a great job. I offered Tom the full-time job going back four years ago. And the reason why he hasn't taken it until now, he's been number one on the graft in police department's hiring list for four years. He lives in, in that area. His father was a police officer in that town. That's eventually where he wants to go. So my disclaimer is right now, he will go there eventually when there's an opening, but right now he's filling the vacancy that I have. It's no expense to the town because he works for us already. He already has all his gear, his equipment, his uniform. So he's just going from a part-time status to a full-time status. He could be with us for six months or six years. He's been waiting four years now for graft and he's kinda frustrated with that process. But I, I have spoken to the police chief in graft and they anticipate some openings in July. The people retired that say they're going to retire. So, to make a long story short, he's good for what we need right now. We have interviews on Thursday night. We have some great candidates coming to, to the interview process.
You're not gonna have any problems finding.
No, we're not gonna have any problem, but I'm, I'm picking, uh, I'm taking my time. There's no need to rush to find someone who's here for the wrong reasons. But at the end of the day, we have to realize one thing. We are the lowest paid department in the valley. And if we are, it is what it is. And when someone has the opportunity, as we've seen two years ago, with, um, a couple of people we had, Jeff Dean. And Steve Cinco, you can go from forty-two thousand dollars to sixty-two thousand dollars. Uh, it doesn't take much thought to figure out, chief, I love the town, I love the department, but you know what? You're not paying my bills. But we do find people that are willing to work for the town for what we pay as well. We have that good core group now in place. So once we fill the vacancy, we'll be fine. We're fine now. On the side of the fire department. Um, you don't have in front of you because normally it wouldn't come here. We are looking for a full-time police, uh, fireman as we speak. I gave it to Helen, uh, this afternoon to advertise that in the local newspaper.
Can you give us an update on that, please?
Yeah, we did have a, um, a fireman officer, actually Lieutenant Leon. He was with us for two years. When I hired Officer Leon in two thousand and eleven, we immediately identified the only problem with, with Lieutenant Leon. He didn't live in town. Uh, his family resides in Wakefield, which is north of Boston.
Seventy miles from Boston.
So he had a one-year probation period moving to town, so I gave him that one year. At the conclusion of that one year, he didn't make the move. He came to me and asked me for a six-month extension of his probation, uh, because of family difficulties moving. And I gave him that six-month extension. And that was, um. A year ago, cause it would've been a year and a half into the process. Six months after that, um, he asked me for one more extension. Cause he was having another family crisis, um, or whatever you wanna call it. So I gave him another extension. But that was, I let him, um, let me know that that would be the last extension. So his deadline was December thirty-first and he yet failed to move. So under state law, which is out of your hands, which is out of my hands, it requires, uh, police and firemen to live within fifteen miles of the town to work it. Wakefield, I spent a lot of time there just to validate the fact that he didn't live in this town. Uh, it's much more than fifteen miles. And some days it took me almost two hours to get there. Some days. Spend the time I went. So, at the end of the day, we have to do right, right for the town and the taxpayers of this town, so. Uh, he's moved on, so now we're advertising to fill that full-time position. And I expect to have an overwhelming response, um, for, uh, full-time firing.
My question to you, with that status going on as right now, who is in that spot to help the captain?
Right now, Captain Fereno, and we do have, uh, a, a group of high-end call firing. For what reason they have the availability during the daytime to work the shifts.
Okay.
So they have been filling in for the vacant position.
My question is, is being filled, that is the.
Being filled on a daily basis. I would anticipate any problems whatsoever with the hiring process. It's posted until February one. So, knowing how it works, we're gonna have a lot of people apply. So once again, the same standards, same requirements. You have to live within fifteen miles. You don't have to live in town. It's not a viable, it's not a state law, but you have to live within fifteen miles of town.
Would you be look, uh, looking to promote the lieutenant?
Uh, yes, um. It all depends on the applicants. If we get an applicant with, with many, many years of experience, fire one and two certified. A lot of training background, a lot of education, that person could step into the lieutenant role immediately. I don't think that's going to happen. I think we're gonna get someone with a few years of experience directly out of the academy. So that person wouldn't be eligible for the lieutenant seat. So I've already posted it in-house. I'm looking for an acting lieutenant until we really figure out who will hire.
Makes sense.
He answers yes to that too.
So you'd be looking for a motion to accept the resignation of Officer Martinson, Officer Pickering, and Officer Kerrigan?
Yes, I would. All in favor? Alright, I'd like to thank those three gentlemen for, uh, their service for the town and, uh. Always had, you know, good, uh, good comments for the whole police department.
It's a disappointment. Uh, you, you, you realize that we're not gonna keep everybody forever.
Oh, you can.
But I understand they're very, you know, it's gratifying when these people find jobs. That'd be much a lot in the department. It does say something about us. Cause we're a pretty good department. As far as the appointment of Officer Martinson, uh, I'm sorry, McNevech, he's sick tonight. Seems to be something going around in the, uh, police station, so. He's home, uh, under the weather as well, so, uh, he's not here today for the appointment, but if you can pass that along, that'd be great.
Alright. Want you to appoint. All in favor? Thank you to, uh, to Officer, uh, McNevenwich, how do you say it?
McNevech.
McNevech, yeah. I'm bad with some of these. It doesn't sound the way it's spelled. Alright, thank you. That's it. So our next regular meeting is Tuesday, January twenty, twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, at seven P M. We locked our minutes, we'll sign. And, uh, we will do signatures now and then, uh, to adjourn following.
And just prior to the signatures, before you do sign, I would just need, um, the board to vote first to sign the chapter ninety final report and reimbursement request in duplicate.
The chairman required the chair's signature.
Nope, it's all five.
All five.
Motion to sign.
In a second. All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Aye. A lot of money goes around in this little town. Stick out, our whole budget is less than some towns' highway budget. How's Henry? Yeah.
Who's that, Henry?
That's the pig, yeah.
Isn't a poppy the house pig?
Make a lot of noise in the house?
No, he's not in the house. He's in my cell room.
Oh.
Yeah. He's cool. He's house-trained, he's really trained. Yeah?
I'll trade him for a kid.
For college. I got three kids, I can give one of them for a kid.
He's like, he goes in a little box?
Yeah.
He doesn't bother you at all?
That's cool.
He's just clean?
Yeah.
So he's pretty cool.
Is he, is he like that pig on TV there? On the Geico commercials?
What was that pig's name?
He's good there.
I forget his name, though.
My wife's name?
It's, uh- Oh, crap. Yeah, that's funny. Henry. Alright. I'm, I'm sure Tammy's gotten him well spoiled.
No, it's, it's actually good therapy for him.
Yep.
He's out right now. Actually, literally, in one day, in one day.
Wow. And how many years does it tell, does it take for you to get your kids to pick their room up?
You're right.
Twenty-five in a row.
Twenty-five in a row, yeah.
Both my kids are waiting up.
I'm all done signing.
All set?
Yep.
More than a year? Yep. Second. All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Go on.